Hi. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the broad and wide horizons of our nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Oakbridge?
Here.
Smith? Thomas?
Here.
Thrash?
Vincentza?
Here.
Five members present, two absent.
Tonight's meeting is going to be one of those nights where we've had some people who were unable to come this evening or without Mr. Thrash is on vacation. Mr. Smith is absent due to a death in the family. The finance director will not be here tonight, got an ill child in Columbus. And our service director took some vacation time because his son is home visiting from the service and shortly will be going back to Germany for three years. So we're going to be shorthanded tonight and take this opportunity to thank Jeremy's son for his service. He's been overseas and now he's going back for three more years. So we'll move on to the minutes. Is there anyone didn't receive their copy of the minutes from the previous meeting? Does anyone have any questions on the minutes from the 18th? Hearing none, will someone make a motion to accept the minutes? Mr. Thomas?
Second.
And Mr. Jordan, may I take the vote, please?
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Oakbridge?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vincentza?
Yes.
All members are present.
Okay, the minutes are approved. They are the minutes at record. Okay, nothing under new business, citizens hearing, or any correspondence? I guess this might be considered a correspondence from, it's probably in everybody's mailbox. This is a notice from the Knights of Columbus reference their coordinates on Thursday, August 11th, 5:30 to 7:30. They simply need to do is bring an appetite because I have hamburgers and lots going. So other than that, that's about it. We'll go right to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Jim. Hard to believe it's our August 1st. I don't know where summer has gone. And I apologize for missing the last meeting. COVID finally got me. But I do hope that anyone who does think they have coronavirus, please get tested early. We still have tests here in the city. And ask your doctor for Paxlovid. It's an antiviral and I can tell you it cut the ferocity of my illness quickly. So I hope nobody else gets it, but I thought I dodged that a little and apparently hadn't. But this past two weeks has been very busy. Last Saturday night, I attended the Wheeling International Film Festival. It was at Towngate Theater and it was organized by St. Clairsville gentlemen. It featured 14, 15-minute films that were submitted all over the world. Films from professionals and amateurs, kids from school. And it was really a good opportunity to see what amateur talent can do. There was a nice crowd. Jim Beal went with me. We both wanted to see how they put this together. And it was put together by a St. Clairsville man. I think his name is Mr. Magyar. And he's going to help us do the same thing for St. Clairsville. So we're looking to do that for next spring, which I think will be nice because right now we have $150,000 that we have been awarded to help fix up the Junior Fair Building. We have to send in an additional plan, and Eric knows all about it, that he has to justify it being a cultural center or a performing arts center. So this is the kind of thing we want to bring to town as well as plays, as well as art classes to have the money and to be able to have that Junior Fair Building fixed up. So that was a good evening. On Tuesday, Governor DeWine and Mrs. Fran DeWine were at the library to announce donations from Gulfport Energy to the Dolly Parton Reading Imagination Library. And the program provides free books to kids from age of birth to age five. And the neat thing is the books come in the mail addressed to the child so they know to look forward to mail. And the kids are super excited to get mail in their name and then to read the books. And I will say, I was very impressed. Mrs. DeWine sat and read a book to the kids. And she, you can tell she was a teacher. She was so good. And I have to say, the governor, he didn't say anything. He knew that was her show, but he stood there smiling like really supporting her. And I thought that was very nice. So thank you, Governor and Mrs. DeWine, for supporting this worthy project. On Wednesday night, Consul General Yusaki Shindo and his wife met for dinner at Belmont Hills Country Club to discuss potential business opportunities in St. Clairsville. I had met the consul general in Columbus about a month and a half ago, and I invited them to come to our town to see what we have to offer in the way of living and schools and opportunities. I also asked Mr. Meyer and Jerry Ashman to represent the county regarding business opportunities. And it went, I thought, exceptionally well. I went out that morning. I bought plum wine, sake, I got a cake and put Arigato Bizaimis on it, which is "Thank you very much for coming." I bought little gifts. I'd read lots about Japanese protocol. And by sheer coincidence, Mrs. Shindo spoke very little English, but her husband mentioned that she had spent part of her childhood in Geneva, Switzerland. And so I just threw a Hail Mary. I said, "Parlez-vous français?" She spoke French, and we spoke French all evening, which I was channeling the nun from Central to please help me with my French. But it was a wonderful evening and she assured me they would be back. So hopefully we will have the opportunity to speak to them again and have them come in to look at bringing potential business to town. To me, the lesson here is always take the language in high school. Now, I think we will hear more from the general organization and hopefully follow up and maybe get business here in town.
Catherine, what kind of business?
He is the consul general representative to all businesses in Japan that may wish to be locating in the United States. And his territory encompasses Michigan, Ohio, Kentucky, two other states. I can't remember which, but I think there's four or five of the consuls in the United States who have parts of territory to help bring business to their particular territory. And he, the staff at the country club was wonderful. I'd gone over earlier in the day and told them what was happening. The pro there, Ron Baker, came over and said, "Would you like to go for like a tour of the golf course on a golf cart?" I mean, they could not have been nicer. It just was an evening that went really well. And hopefully he'll be able to see business in Japan, might be interested in coming to our area. And when we left, Jerry Ashman said to me, "You really did a good job of selling St. Clairsville." I said, "Well, I'm used to doing my homework. That's what I did for work." So again, hopefully something will come from it. We had mayor's court this week. We had several suspended licenses and fines and a zoning violation. I think that got cleared up today. And I'd like to send my condolences to Councilman Mike Smith and his family. He lost his dad last week. And I knew Mr. Jim Smith. He was just an absolutely wonderful, honorable man. So prayers for Mike Smith and his family, please. And last but not least, I'm going to call on Eric, please, to announce the new employee at the rec center.
Do I have to come up?
No, stand at the place.
Yeah, you do.
No, I have to come up.
That's the recording.
I know, I know. Rocco Balogh started today. St. Clairsville guy, just graduated from college. He's going to be a huge asset for us, you know. He's very excited about the job. You know, he's going to be overseeing a lot of the programs and, you know, really helping build upon the stuff we already have. But I'm thrilled to have him. So today was his first day and we got a lot of the computer stuff knocked out of the way and it'll be a little busier tomorrow. So thank you, guys.
Thanks, Eric. And I think that's about it, Jim.
Okay. Any one have any questions for the mayor?
You go first.
The Gulfport donation, was that to the Dolly Parton library? Was that to our library?
No, it's to, well, it's to the Dolly Parton to buy the books, to send out. And I think it's like we've centered in this county, to send to the kids in this county. So it will come back to our kids because the Debbie Stanton, I think what they do is they donate the money to the community foundation, who then turns around and sends it to the library and like it'll say on a Gulfport Energy donation and then the child's name. So it'll come back to our kids.
Good. Well, I'd like to thank Gulfport Energy.
Absolutely.
Dolly Parton?
And Dolly.
Yes. It's a huge program that she does.
Yes.
Anything else? Do you have any questions?
No, I'm good.
I just want to thank you for all those meetings on behalf of St. Clairsville.
Sure.
And promoting our city, which I can imagine is not that difficult.
No, we have a great place.
But a lot of energy and a lot of commitment. I appreciate that.
Sure.
And then I just wanted to follow up on the issue that we had with the dog about a year ago and see if there's any status change there.
Yes. We finally were able to have them come in today. And I told them I was very upset with the way this has gone on. And part of it was they had an attorney who was not getting back to us, but they have a two-week grace period to get started on the fence. And for every week that it is not put up, it's a $100 fine. So I want to put a real-time crunch on it. So yes.
And did you, are they agreed to do that?
Yes. And to have the insurance for the dog because otherwise they said, "We will talk about having the dog surrender." So we'll look at this. We'll revisit it in two weeks.
And to the degree that you can keep us updated on that, I appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yes, Tom is on it too. He's going to be riding by and checking and see what progress is being made.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions for the mayor? Okay, thank you, mayor.
Sure.
Okay, good service director, Jeremy Greenwood is in here this evening. Don, do you have anything that you want to?
The crews have all been busy. The street department has been patching holes.
Eric, good romance.
The city has been really busy. There have been patches, potholes, painting, lines and things around school, getting ready for that. We got the school lights ready to go. The outings the other night was not the city's. AEP 69 line was down. They had troubles. And there's section of town that was out was reservoir road in that area. We just couldn't carry the entire load on that. But we've been doing service work replacing poles, that type of thing. The sewer department, water breaks, smoking the sewers and houses. And everybody's been busy and things are moving right along.
Thank you, Don. Anybody have any questions, Don?
Where are we at with the smoking? What ward are we in right now?
We're still in Ward 1. We have about six more streets.
I need it.
Thank you.
We have about six more streets to do for Ward 1. And that hopefully will take place by next week. And then we'll go to Ward 2 after that.
Anybody else, anybody else have any questions? We're sure sits down.
Jim, can I just say something? Jim, I just, I want to shout out, thank you to Eric and to Don. That night the power was out. I know you guys were working on it right away, but Tara put out a thing on Facebook to let people know if their houses got really hot. The rec center did have power. And again, it was just by the grace of God. But I went downstairs till 8:00. I think Eric was there till 10:00, waiting to see if people came in that needed to charge their phones or, you know, use any kind of electrical equipment. So we were there for them, but it wasn't nearly as bad as the ice storm. Thank God, so.
Okay, thanks. Appreciate it, guys. Okay, we'll move on to police chief. Chief Harvins?
Good evening, everybody. For the month of July, we had 384 calls for service. We had one SWAT team call out, four crashes, which is better than usual, 20 arrests, four warrants served, seven domestic violence calls, and 124 traffic stops. Since last we spoke, we had the demonstration for the kinetic breaching tool that was spoken about the last meeting. It went well. It was a very impressive piece of equipment. I think there were departments there from Tuscarawas, Jefferson, Belmont, a lot of people showed up. So we're definitely sold on the equipment. I'm currently just waiting for St. C. Schools to line their funding up and then make that purchase. A week and a half ago, I had the honor of escorting the Beyond the Call of Duty Memorial from the St. Clairsville area to the federal building in Wheeling to honor the two officers there at the federal building who lost their lives last year in 2021. Those were due to COVID illnesses that they contracted while they were on duty. The Beyond the Call of Duty Memorial travels in 2022. They're hitting every single officer that lost a life while working in 2021, and they go to every single department across the country. And they have a 40-foot trailer with everybody's pictures on it. They perform the service. Their family members could come out. It was a very nice, very nice morning. Since we last spoke, we've had one officer complete evidence room custodian training. We have two, we had two more days of training at St. C. Schools for response to active shooters. We currently have two in training for lockpicking and bypass. And all officers are currently in progress of their 24 hours of mandatory continued professional training. I think everybody is caught up. They're more than halfway through, so everything's looking good. That's it.
Thanks, man. Anybody have any questions for the chief? Okay, thank you, man. Okay, move on to zoning manager, Mr. Murphy, since the finance director isn't here.
All right, thanks, Jim. Just to remind council that the Board of Zoning Appeals has a meeting this Wednesday, August 3rd. The two items on the agenda are Trinity House Systems and some variants related to their site. And then the second item is Ed Personowski and Forest Lawn, a variant allowing it to park, create parking spaces in the right way. Anyone's welcome to attend. If you have questions, you can ask me now or you can give me a call prior to the meeting if you can't attend then. And I was going to jump onto a little bit of what Catherine said in regard to that fence and the dog. The person in question came to see me after mayor's court and said they wanted to modify their fence application and change what they've originally been approved for back in October of last year. And I said, "That's fine." I just, I gave them what I needed and they can contact me when they want to submit their application. So a little bit of an update on that from what Catherine said.
But still two weeks.
Well, that was Catherine's decision, so yeah.
To give them two weeks to get Lowe's or whomever over there and get started so we see action. And then for every two weeks it's not finished, they're going to get fined. So to put a little urgency to it.
So the sooner they get me their modified application and the sooner the city can approve it.
And you don't know yet what the modifications are?
No, not yet. They kind of were talking to me a little bit about it. And I said, "Okay, what I need you to do is what you did before. Show me out of plan what your proposal is and then we can move forward."
He told me part of it was he wanted to put privacy fence up in one part, and then he's modifying to put privacy fence. And then I think behind it's going to be cyclone because his neighbor didn't want a privacy fence. I said, "I don't care what it is, but there better be a fence." So.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy?
Date and time of the meeting?
It'll be August 3rd, this Wednesday at 6:00 PM, right here in council chambers here.
And also, any updates on the AEP project, the polls?
No, nothing at all. I actually just asked Donnie that last week and he said they're still slowly moving forward.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mark? This is a very menial question in the large picture with Trinity, but something that's very important to me. Can you ask them about that portion of the old national road, the brick road that's in front of their property and what their intent is to do with that?
Yeah, we've already asked them that and we've encouraged that they incorporate as much as they can into their development. You can cross that. You can even from a little bit up or you can even remove part of that. But we're encouraging them to keep as much as possible and to incorporate it into the development and maybe even take a little bit of, I think they probably won't go this far, but like a park-type environment. Although it's the original path of the national road. It's not a, brick wasn't put in in the 1800s. It wasn't until like the 1920s. But it would be nice to keep that section intact or something.
Sure would.
Catherine, didn't, did you recall him saying that they didn't? That's what I thought. Yes. And I'd gone to a lunch, the chamber hit, "Yes, ma'am, thank you for saying that." They would like to almost highlight that and make sort of like a little park, maybe put benches out there. But they understand its historical significance, so they want to enhance what we've got. So yes, thank you for asking.
Very good.
Yes, thank you, Linda.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Murphy? Okay, thanks, Don.
You're welcome.
Move on to the council committees. Mr. Smith is in here this evening. Ms. Butler for utilities.
Yes, we had a meeting tonight. Really, all we had was the utility report, the billing report that we went over. Our next meeting will be the 6th, right? Because the Labor Day is on the 5th. And it'll be at 6:15, the new time for the meetings. And that's really all I have.
Any questions? And Ms. Oakbridge, police committee, any report?
And our next meeting will be the 15th after the council.
Good, good. Mr. Vincentzo, streets on the side.
Yeah, I had a request from a concerned citizen, and I'm not quite sure which route you take on it. On Legion Road, going down Legion Road from the laundromat, he was wanting to know if we can get a children playing sign installed. There's some new neighbors there and there's about three young children playing close to the road, and he's really concerned. He's talked to them, but he just wanted to know if we can do something like that.
Can we get this, Donnie and Jeremy on that?
Okay.
Yeah, well, we just need to verify the location where this really needs to be.
Yeah. And I was figuring just down from the car wash, maybe toward the end, maybe where the city was.
I guess, where are they playing at?
It was the, right on the corner there where Legion Road goes down.
By, by the cannon?
Yes. No, 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 no.
Other direction.
Down. In fact, it is the ex-councilman's house. That's where they're.
Oh, okay. I know where you're talking about.
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, we take a look there.
And they just thought maybe halfway down Legion Road so that before they get there, you know, they realize.
All right. We'll work on it.
Okay, and then I know they're working on patching and road repair. And I know there's one concern on North River Street and the one up north with a pretty, pretty deep pothole. Maybe we can get that one taken care of. And, you know, but everything's looking good on the big patches.
Good thing, Don. Again, Mr. Thrash is in here for safety or set streets on the south side. So move on to building and grounds. Jordan, you have anything on?
No report, but I would like to ask Donnie if anything at all has been done about that portion of the bike trail that was closed down? The steps? Has anything, any progress?
That's all in the projects at OD and Art, and that's working on it. The steps are still closed and they will be for quite some time.
Okay, thank you. That was the report.
Okay. Move on, planning commission, Mr. Thomas, do you have anything on?
No report.
Okay. Jordan, Fire District, anything?
The board did approve the hiring of Nathan Yost as a part-time employee effective July 25th at the rate of $14.50 per hour. And the next meeting is August 24th, 9:00 AM at the station.
Okay, any questions on Fire District? Okay, move on to Recreation Department, Mr. Thomas.
Sure. I'd like to make sure that your time spent here in the night is worthwhile, so we'll try to extend the meeting as long as we can. I do have a report, all joking aside. The first thing is September the 10th, you'll get another reminder in a couple of weeks, but the Fall Fest at the amphitheater will be held that day. Sponsors of Belmont Savings Bank, Luca Magistro. Three bands starting at 4:30 PM that day. Food vendors, the ever-so-fun axe-throwing. Drinks, desserts. Good time. Should be exciting. Drinks and axe-throwing always go well together. So that'll be an interesting evening. Make sure, make sure our insurance is paid off, please, please.
The Fire District on notice too.
Yeah, yeah. Name my ambulance there.
Is it at the rec center then?
No, well, yeah, it's that idea. It's a park.
Amphitheater.
Yeah. This coming Thursday, the kids that participate in the county CCAP program will be at the rec center doing some landscaping, which will be really nice. Very nice project for, for those kids. So looking forward to seeing that. Beginning, also beginning this Thursday and for the first Thursday of every month for the balance of the year.
Yeah.
The St. Clairsville area Chamber of Commerce will hold its safety meetings at the rec center. Okay, the first Thursday of each month for the balance of the year. Tomorrow is Election Day. Yes. The statewide, the elections for state reps, state senators, state central committee will be held tomorrow, so get out and vote. Of course, the rec center is a polling location, so it will be closed tomorrow for Election Day. Friday, August 12th, will be the all-night catfish tournament at the reservoir. So mark your calendars for that, 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. You'll hear more, well, no, actually, we're two weeks out, so that'll be in this coming little 10 days. Also, that same night, 7:30 to 9:00, will be the last acoustic concert at the Bike Trail Gazebo. Is it Logan Wode chicken dinner? He was really good, the first, I think he did the first one.
Yeah.
And Logan will be there on Friday, August 12th, at the gazebo, 7:30 to 9:00. That's my report. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mark. Anybody?
Just a question on the catfish tournament. Do people have to register beforehand?
They can.
How many?
Right now? Seven or eight right now.
Okay. Was the landscaping donated?
Not the material.
The labor, the young people's labor.
Yeah.
Do you have a cost on that, Eric?
$220.
Oh, okay.
Any other questions?
Could I just also put a shout out to London's Florals and to Rural King? They donated planters and beautiful flowers that are now on the stage of the amphitheater. And so we've thanked them when we do the concerts, but I'd like to do it here in council too. So thank them for that.
Okay, any further questions on the rec center? Eric, do you have anything else? Park District, did you have?
No report.
Okay, that concludes the council committees. We have the ordinances or resolutions this evening?
No legislation tonight.
Anything?
Pardon?
Do you have anything that you wish to?
No.
Okay, that concludes the agenda for this evening. Mark?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Just a couple of things. Just to keep in mind for the future, again, a reminder about House Bill 377, the $500, $500 billion Ohio builds, fault communities, monies that the legislature has passed. Think about it, what we can do sooner than later to get ready for an application. It's just a reminder to keep it in your head, please. That's it. One other thing, long-term, to consider, with my work, I travel Ohio a lot and work in a lot of county seat cities. And I... and work in a lot of county seat cities and a lot of them are doing downtown revitalization, a lot of them. There's money out there to do that, including monies in House Bill 377. Believe it or not, the city of St. Clairsville is probably approaching 30 years since the downtown streetscape was originally done.
32.
32? Okay, 32 years. It's, it's still very nice, but it's tired. And something to consider down the road that I just, I want to plant the seed in your head, to think about it for the future. We need to, the last one that was done, this was the chamber had worked with the city on that, they were kind of like in conjunction with partners and we, we got that done and everybody participated and it was really nice. Still get a lot of great comments about downtown St. Clairsville, but when I see some of these other county seats and some of the newer stuff that's being done, it's, it's really impressive and I just want to implore upon you to think about that we, we eventually need to do that. And whether we partner with the chamber to try to move that thing forward, I will tell you this, the county commission has its plan in place for a renovation of the entire plaza in front of the courthouse, down to the museum. We started that process in 2017 and had it designed and went through a number of different funding opportunities, were never successful. And I, when I left office there, I encouraged the guys to keep that train running and they have. And I think they are very close to receiving an ODOT grant to do that project, which may begin as early as 2023 and no later than 2024. It's already designed, depending upon what type of monies that they get, you know, there's a, there's a tier A design, a tier B design and beyond, depending upon the amount of monies. The goal there is not only to replace the concrete and a lot of the brick, that's anybody that, you know, we have many events there, it needs done and the commissioners are aware of that and so they're making good progress, but to do more green space. The project also calls for a fountain in front of the museum on the corner, if the funding there is in place. So it would be a great opportunity for the city to start its thinking about how can we possibly do that and look at some funding sources to again redo the downtown, in essence, between the streetlights of Sugar and Marietta Streets. So, thank you for listening to me.
Is there a list online of available projects or allowable projects?
For what's the money? I haven't, well, I will tell you this, from my knowledge, any infrastructure stuff, any rails to trails, that's why for me, I'm one person, I'm willing to help do whatever needs to be done. For me, the House Bill 377 monies are best used for us right now on, on expanding the bike trail, somehow, some way. Again, the southern end is the easiest way to do it, as I see it. I haven't seen, Linda, I haven't seen a formal list come out at this point. I'm still waiting on the application that I had indicated two weeks ago when we last met or so, that should be coming out very shortly. I haven't seen yet. You know, for us to be ready to do a streetscape project is nearly impossible with, with these monies, because of the time that it takes, it takes an entire year to do that. And we spent an entire year putting together a package five years ago, which is now coming to fruition at the courthouse. So that, that takes a bigger project, and it takes cooperation from the downtown business owners too. So if I get that list, if, when I find it, or anybody, we can share it with everybody. Yes ma'am?
Oh, I'm sorry, I just wanted to tell you too, I'd gone to the chamber lunch that Trinity sponsored about three weeks ago at Undoes and I talked to the developer, the Trinity, one of the developers for the project, I said, "You know what, you should put the bike trail at Trinity too, because it would connect right down there with the hill."
I thought of that, that's a great, you know, we, a lot of people forget that we have the bike trail that extends westward from Reservoir Road, you know, Reservoir and Johnette Drives extends westward. I thought of that exact same thing.
Yep.
That the, of, of having Trinity, however their design lays out for that 10 acres that they bought, it would be great to, for us to extend that bike trail and do a walking trail, bike trail if you will, in and around the property. Now that would take cooperation from Trinity, but, but boy, I bet you that, that would be really a nice project that I think the state would look at, that in essence would become a public-private partnership to be able to do that. And, and if we could get Trinity to commit some funds to that, you know, the city of St. Clairsville does its part, that would be a great project. Thanks for bringing that up because it's the first thing that came to mind of those funds, expanding the bike trail and other places other than Reservoir Road, out to the reservoir like I suggested the first month ago.
If you get into like the Trinity, it's really no stopping. Once we get our water lines moving and we like pave Reservoir Road, I'd love to see that go all the way down to the reservoir.
Yeah.
If we had a white path.
Yeah, again, it takes some cooperation with the Georgetownship trustees, but, but connecting the trail on the western end down to its southern end and hopefully out to the reservoir would be fantastic. These opportunities are here and we need to take advantage of them. I bring it up again and I'm going to, you know, as much as I can, continue to do so because the money is there, we just need to do the work and I'm happy to help.
I just wondered what cities you would recommend the county have as far as their revitalization projects that are particularly impressive?
Well, yeah, I'll tell you, the ones that I've seen most recently, that have completed in the last couple of years, some of them are far away though. The closest one that just finished recently is Koshakken. Downtown Lima, I was there last week, downtown Bryan, Ohio, which is the county seat of Williams County, which is the farthest county in the northwest corner of the state, one hour west of Toledo, they just did it. And those are three that immediately come to mind. I was in the village of Ada in Hardin County on Friday, working my way home from Williams and I went from Ada to Kenton, which is the county seat of Hardin County, and they just did theirs. I, and I, I almost, the problem was I was past the hours when the offices were open because I was going to contact, I was going to go to city buildings and ask particularly like, "What funding source did you use for some of these projects?" And I still may do that with phone calls. But there's five right there, unfortunately, four of them are in northwest Ohio.
Mark, could you, when you're traveling, maybe get some pictures and I'm sure Jim could put them up on your website.
Oh, I'd be, I'd be happy to.
I'm sure they all have websites too.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I'd be happy to do that. So anyway, that's it. Thank you for the time, I appreciate it.
Thanks Mark. Anybody else? If there ain't nothing else, adjourn the meeting, do you need a motion to adjourn here? And adjourn.